We have other housing going up. This is cause for concern. I don't want anybody to get hurt. There was one accident previously. I don't want it to come to that. And thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I would just go off the list now. Mr. Diamond.
Diamond, 74 Calvert. I am curious.
Recognize you have the floor, Mr. Diamond.
I am curious. I've asked two or three times so far since we've gotten the new engineer what the status of the flooding deal is with Abbott and Calvert. When are we going to get an answer, an update to what's going on? Now, I'm curious with the new format of four minutes and no rebuttals. And apparently, part of the new system is you're not talking to us till the meetings, till we all sit down. If I don't get a rebuttal and you forget to answer my question, how do I deal with that? Pretty much. Okay. This is an email from Lois that she asked me to read. Lois Wolke. "It was very disappointing to see the proposed ordinance, no number, amending code 2.2.13 addressing the council, limiting speaking time to four minutes and eliminating rebuttals altogether. I assume this ordinance came out due to the disrespectful behavior and ravings of one resident who spoke at the microphone several times at meetings. It is shameful that one individual's disrespect has punished all the respectful citizens who come to council meetings for positive purposes. The person's behavior has also resulted in lengthening the meetings, and I assume with this ordinance, the council hopes to also rectify that problem. In that regard, it may be wise for the council to consider limiting speaking time for council members. Some council members have spoken for over a half an hour on one issue, then revisited the issue after questions have been asked and answered. This sometimes resulted in a cumulative speaking time of over an hour and lengthening the meeting. It is my hope that the council reconsider this ordinance, and there may be a fair way to resolve the problem and not punish all Edison residents. Thank you for your consideration." That was again Lois Wolke. And I have a question for the attorney when the public portion's over. Now that we have a very senior, experienced attorney back, I want to know, because I remember who you were when you used to be here, do you have the right to throw somebody out of this meeting without the town suffering from a lawsuit? Thank you.
Any of the member of the public?
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you. I have a question about, where did it go? From the Chief of Fire, resolution authorizing to grant permission to Garden State fireworks, to discharge fireworks. I wanted to know if that's a cost incurred by the township? And if there is no rain date, do we still have to pay? Or how does that work? That was my question. The other thing that I really came for is I live off Inman Avenue between Grove and where the Dunkin' Donuts is. And many times, I walk with my grandchildren to the park that's in disarray, but the swings and the jungle gym are their favorites. So we walk Inman Avenue. And I took a picture and I actually sent it to one of the council people because the grass was taller than my five-year-old grandson. And I asked, it seems like a yearly thing that I have to bug one of you. I don't like to bug the same person every year, so I take turns with you guys. You'll probably be next. But anyway, I asked if it is a county road. It is the back of people's property and their fences. And it's usually an eyesore. But two days later, they came, I think with their truck and find and cut the grass down within maybe two or three feet inside the sidewalk. Did they pick up anything? No. It's all the brown droppings. Plus, the area from within that to the back of the people's fences was not taken care of. And with the rain and the humidity, it's going to be bug-infested. Is there some way we could put a little more pressure on the county to take care of this? Because it's a main thoroughfare. People from other towns are driving through there consistently. And it's an eyesore. And I know at council meetings, we talk about beautifying Edison. Well, Inman Avenue is not. So appeal to anyone that can do a little bit more. I thank you for cutting it because we did walk, but it still smells and is not in any decent shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mary Ann Hennessy.
Good evening. Mary Ann Hennessy. Carmelo Drive. I would like to add.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to add my voice to my unhappiness about my time being cut and no rebuttal as the result of one person's behavior, which I find abhorrent. Should be thrown out once or twice, given a warning. If not, then the council president needs to tell the police officer to escort whoever the person is that's creating the problem. Out. Don't punish me. I put up with it under June Choi and Anne Marie Griffin Usack. I don't want it back again. The next are a series of questions that can be answered. The resolution for the Government Strategy Group for $15,900 a month, not to exceed $191,400. Who is covered from them for this resolution? What do they do? What's the breakdown of the salary for each? And do they submit a report? And who gets the report? My next one is Vision Media Marketing. I'm glad we're getting somebody that could probably get us out there a lot better than we have been. But I'm asking, what was the first $7,181.50 that now has to be added to the scope? What was it for? Who did it? Who did it get reported to? My next question, what is the King George Post Road Rehabilitation Project? Is it just roadway being done? And my question is, that road runs into Raritan Center. Is Raritan Center helping with the cost? If it's a grant, is it of no expense to the town? Or do we have to meet a 50/50 or a percentage? Central Avenue sidewalk. Plainfield Avenue down to the playground. I'm glad to see that's going to happen, especially with the rebuilding of that facility. I ask, who can tell me about the parking lot that is down there? Is that a parking lot anybody can come into and park the entire day, grab the train and go into New York? Or do we have a fee that they have to pay to use the space? If not, the town needs to look into changing that into a parking lot with a medallion and a fee. Your question about putting in 12 workstations in the 911. And if you read it further, it then asks for 66 monitors. I mean, we have 66 more people in the 911 station. If those monitors are not all for the 911 station, you need to make that more clear in your ordinance or whatever you want to call it. Coming out of account C 0416-1998-103000. I see there's some kind of a grant coming to the police department for safety. Could you tell me what that's for? What it will be utilized for? Is it for the entire town? My next question, Zephron System. We're going for $413,000, almost $414,000 to buy equipment. It doesn't indicate that the software is included. But then we come up with an additional $17,500 for asset management software. Why does it show that $40,800 has been certified for that when you're only asking for $17,005? Think? If you'll give me a moment. I think that's everything that I wanted to. Oh. I also wanted to ask, when you have a piece of property that is bounded by a county road that runs this way, and your property runs this way, and you paved the road, Central Avenue, you paved that road to not up to Plainfield Avenue. Who's responsible for paving that strip between Plainfield Avenue and where we paved? Because that strip between Plainfield Avenue and coming back is in terrible shape, and it is not marked to show left-hand turn and straight ahead. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Ron Loffler.
Hi, Ron Loffler, 6 Nancy Circle.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you. My questions are, what problems are we looking to solve by reducing our oral petition time from six minutes to four minutes? Do people actually take up the entire six in the first place? Will the issue be resolved? Live streaming. Earlier when I came in here, we weren't live streaming. Does the council intend to continue live streaming the meetings? What is the status with the planning board and the zoning board and the letters or emails that went out regarding their live streaming? That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Fagan.
Good evening. Nick Fagan, 42, Edgewood Row.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Ron stole my thunder. I wanted to speak also about and ask about live streaming. I noticed that we are not streaming currently and was looking to see if the council intending to change that. Clearly, we're not streaming now, so it seems like there might be a change. I would also like an update from the attorney, please. The attorney previously promised a couple of meetings ago that they would draft a letter regarding live streaming and the position of live streaming for zoning board, planning board, for this meeting and others. I would like an update to that because my Oprah has been extended on that request. I also agree with the previous folks that have talked that punishing the entire Edison public for the actions of one is probably not wise and would ask you to reconsider that, especially the rebuttal. I get it, you need to run efficient meetings. But if you don't answer the questions, and I haven't seen a whole bunch of note-taking up there, and I've seen lots and heard lots of questions. The only one that I've seen note-taking is the city manager or the business manager. So I'm hoping that she's captured all of our questions and that they will be answered. Because if they're not, then I don't know where I'm with Mr. Diamond. I don't know where we're going to ask the questions and get them answered. Another two topics is all I got. For folks that are watching at some time, whenever this goes on, June 21st, next Tuesday, right in this room at 7:00 PM is zoning board of adjustment. For folks that are supporting the Charlie Browns crew, the developers coming to propose 14, I'm sorry, 16 units, 16 townhouses. And so, we believe that that is out of character with the neighborhood, and we need your help to come tell the zoning board that it is out of character with the zone plan and with the, and that they should vote no and reject the plan and that the, send the applicant back to redo their plan for single-family homes. That's the only thing that is appropriate in our neighborhood per the zone plan. So, June 21st, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, in this room, zoning board of adjustment. It is not livestreamed or zoomed, so you have to physically attend. So we would appreciate your support and coming out and helping us tell the zoning board your opinion and own your neighborhood. And then lastly, I also see that there's a zoning board appointment on the agenda. But in looking over this weekend at the longer form that is online, I did not see a name or an actual submission of who that person is. So we would like to know who that person is at this meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Council President, just a point of information. It is being livestreamed, but it's on YouTube right now. So if you have people that are interested, it's on YouTube. Thank you.
Kristo. This is your rebuttal?
To the council president, to the lawyer, and to Councilman Brecher, to Councilman Brecher as well. Have you just witnessed what happened? Who is this one person ruining it for everybody? Can we name this one person? And what specific examples this person did to lead on to that? When the public sees the last meeting, just like today, very well behaved, did nothing wrong. The reason I'm not going to vote for the county Republicans, they do not support their constituents. They conspire against their constituents. After that, another member of the government board, which happens to be Mr. Diamond, who many times drops F-bombs at members in the audience. Who is the one person who disrupts the meeting? We'd like to know. Lawyer, you're well aware of the hecklers veto, that members in the audience, they, just because they don't like my speech, or they cannot demand my removal, just because they don't like my presence, they cannot demand my removal. This is what happens often, many times. And this is why Edison, I put a $4 million tour claim on Edison. Because members of the audience, instead of acting professional, they're all the time demanding the Edison police remove one resident when only the council president has the authority to do so. They don't know parliamentary procedures here in this government, and this is going to cost you millions of dollars, again, to have a whole community gang up these people, the government employees on boards and committees, Republican-Democrat committee people. You will never have a real Edison resident complain. This manufactured outrage in order to bully one resident on the May 23rd Facebook posting, Councilman Brecher, you will see. It's cyber harassment and conspiracy to cyber harass. That's an indictable offense here in the state of New Jersey. Why, when you look at the last meeting, again, I made no racist, sexist, or any other remarks, maybe, you know, none of it, I am not responsible for another, first of all, the other person who argued with Joyce isn't even a resident here in Edison. And they're saying one Edison resident ruined it for everyone? They need, these people need to get their facts straight. Stop bullying people that lived here all our lives, and we come to this meeting to voice our opinion. Lawyer, are you going to allow hecklers veto? Are you going to allow mob rule to take over Edison? Are you going to allow people in the audience to say, we don't want black people in here? We don't want Jewish people in here? We don't want Irish people in here? This is absolutely disgusting, because this is what's taking place right now. They don't have to like my speech, but they will have to put up with it during my time. And Councilman Coe, for you to butcher the public speaking time, that's absolutely ridiculous.
Time is up. Any of the members of the public seeing dogs have a motion to.
Motion to close the public portion.
Motion by.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, say aye. Ayes. The public portion is closed. Let's wait for the, the BA just stepped out, so we'll wait, we'll pause and go through the agenda before we answer any questions. Item five, the calendar, municipal budget and solid waste budget. Any comments to A and C?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Brecher.
Would you mind if the clerk read the first couple lines of that document? The Township of Edison Middlesex County Resolution to amend budget? I just have a question about the first line.
Councilman Brecher, first, you're recognized. You have the floor. Second, can we skip to another question until she finds it? You found it? Okay.
Yes. The first line, I think, is wrong.
Oh, sorry. Whereas the local budget for year 2022 was approved on the 27th day of April 2022.
Mr. Brecher, I'm going to anticipate your question. The budget law actually refers to, the first reading has approval and the second reading is adoption. And I always thought that was odd myself. I would always think it should have been introduction and adoption. But that's what the budget law says, right, Ken? Yeah. Strange, but that's what the local budget law says.
Okay, so.
So it's correct.
Right, so it's correct. In my mind, I got a backwards.
It says, but it does say approved and adopted, and I realize it should be introduced.
Should be introduced.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any else, Councilman Brecher? Okay. Hearing, anybody else? A, B, and C from number five, the county municipal budget and solid waste budget. Hearing no comments, moving to reports from all council committees from my left, Councilman John Porter.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman, you're recognized.
My apologies. And apologies for being late. On Thursday, the Edison Environmental Commission will be meeting on the third floor here at the municipal complex in the Thomas Edison Room. We had a Public Works Subcommittee meeting, in which case we discussed several emergency matters in regards to backup generators and fueling during those times. That's about it for right now. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Patel, if you'd just hold for a moment, if we can go through some of the questions to answers for the public. Sony, do you have some of them written down? I know the clerk also.
Sure, I do. The ones that were, I believe, related to, that I may actually answer with regard to the Fourth of July fireworks. So that is actually a donation through Hackensack Meridian and Magyar Bank. There is no rain date, rather, it's postponed until further notice if, in fact, it does rain that day. So that is with regard to the fireworks. The, with regard to Government Strategy Group, we actually have here Mr. Ken Robert, who, that firm actually oversees all of the finance operations, day-to-day operations, and serving as the finance director. So that is the renewal for the contract for professional services. Those are the two that stood out. Was there any other questions that you had related to resolutions?
Vision.
Vision Media, yes.
Right.
So initially, the contract was for the design element of the illuminator, if you will. However, we've now seen that the communication has been really great, and we're printing more. So that was in, that was the addition to what we, the council had originally adopted back a few months ago. And that would finish up the year, so we don't have to come back to council to, for any additional monies.
Madam Clerk, do you want to go through any of the questions? Okay. Sorry.
There was a question, Madam Business Administrator, can, I guess it was a series of questions concerning the workstations and the number of monitors for the 911. And it was also a question as to whether or not the Zentron alert system for 911 communications included the software. So it was two questions. One is, how many, there's 12 workstations, there's 66 monitors. I think I know the answer to the question. No, we're not hiring 66 people, if that was the question. So I think I got that one without even asking her. But the question is what the nature of those purchases are and whether or not the Zentron system contains the software, which I believe it does, but I.
I believe it does. And with regard to the 12 workstations, I believe they're about, you know, there could be four to six monitors per station. I can get that number for Wednesday, if you'd like, and just to get the clarification that it includes a software program. But I believe that it does.
Madam Clerk, if you have any else. We also, I know we discussed, Mr. Fagan had a question and Mr. Ron Loffler about the live streaming for zoning. We do have a letter here that was put together through Councilman Patel and all members of the council got it, and I believe we're sending it out tomorrow morning to request the zoning board to consider live streaming. And obviously, someone answered, this live streaming is on right now. There must have been some technical difficulty, lost a few weeks in and out, but mic were up and good, so no problems there.
Council President.
She, yes. Answer the other questions. Madam Clerk?
The one regarding the election, Maria, that you pointed out, yes, the county, we're well aware of that. So we, when we have our final roundup meeting in another week or so for the clerks, we do have that on our list, because that was a problem. Not just in Edison, it was all over. And Nick, that's my mistake, that it didn't get uploaded on the public folder, and I'll make, it'll be done for Wednesday, and if you need a copy of it, we'll give it to you. Because it was late by the time we figured out who, and I apologize. But the council has it and has all the backup to it, zoning members.
And there was one question for me. Thank you for pointing out how old I am. I always, I always do, I always do, it's always good to be back in Edison. It's always good to be reminded how young I was when I was first here and how old I am now. The answer is, is that somebody can be removed from a meeting. There is actually a criminal statute for disrupting a public meeting that would give the basis for doing that. And the question always becomes whether or not the conduct rises to that. So if your question is, can you remove somebody without getting sued? You always get sued, but that's not the issue. The issue is that there actually is a criminal statute that permits you to do that. The officers probably know better than I do, because they probably read it before they came here tonight. It's a disruption of a lawful assembly, I think, is what the statute is. And I believe that the question that I, that was to me with regards to the letter was answered by the council president, I believe.
Council President? Just to assure that we've gone through all of the questions. I know it was brought up about the King George Post Road Rehabilitation. I know I asked you earlier about this, but maybe we can talk about that when it comes up on the, on the agenda.
The public portion is closed.
How can you close something when she didn't answer my question?
Well, you're.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We, what we can have is this, and I apologize. Please sit down. We close the public portion.
I think that the, I apologize, I think that council, was it Lafayette Street? Is that, was it? Yeah, Lafayette Street.
I was going to wait until the discussion items, but I can certainly answer now. I spoke with DPW Director Ray, and he had mentioned that the portion from Parsonage to the end where Route 1 comes with that on-ramp or onto that road, it is Edison's road. It's been kind of patched throughout numerous years, and at this point, it kind of just needs to be fully redone. Originally, it was held off because the intention was that there was infrastructure work underneath that was going to be performed. So they were waiting for that work to be performed prior to doing the repaving. But that has not happened. They are aware of the situation. I personally drive by that road often, so I'm aware of the potholes there, but that's the current situation, and I will be sure to follow up. Thank you.
Council President, I know that there was a question. I wasn't sure whether it was a hypothetical or not about Central Avenue and, I guess, Plainfield Avenue, the paving. The answer is, is that there is a jurisdictional line there. The county paves their jurisdictional line, we paved our jurisdictional line. So if there's a strip in between, I can't tell you who's responsible, because it depends on who didn't get to their line. I think that that's the answer to it. But, but, but I, we hear your concern, though, and I know that the Business Administrator made a note, and we'll check. And if you want, you can check with the BA's office, and we'll get an answer to your question. I don't know that any of us know exactly what it is right now. And I think that that's probably the best thing for you, because in detail, we're all, we're taking notes, and we might not have gotten them all. But certainly, if you email her or call her, she'll answer whatever question you have. You're welcome.
You finished, Councilmember Patel? You recognize your committees?
Council President, I have no report at this time to report.
You're out of order, Mr. Tom, you're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. Councilmember Patel?
So the question that Mr. Bruce Diamond asked was about the Calvert flooding. If you can get an answer for him for Wednesday.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
It was flooding on Calvert Ave. An issue with flooding, that's what he was referring to. And in terms of reports from the committees, I've been working with Walt Stociol from Open Space Committee, working very hard to essentially put together all the information that we have gathered over since 1993 till now in terms of a bike path and walking paths and essentially more recreation spaces for the community. There has been many initiatives that have taken place in the past, and we have a lot of plans, and some of them fell through. And we have a lot of information and a lot of studies done. And at this point, we're just putting the information together to have a, essentially take stock of where we stand. And we're going to pursue this further with the mayor and the administration down the road. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. I know there's some questions on recreation. There'll be a report on recreation, so if we can wait to get Ms. Harris. We'll wait on that to answer these questions for Maria Ockert, okay? Yeah, I'm recognized. Ms. Harris, you're recognized, you have the floor for committee reports.
Councilman John Poyner, Department Recreation Director Joyce Virta and I met on June 2nd at 11:45 a.m. with regard to a Parks and Recreation Subcommittee. And topics of discussion were first, open positions and structure. With Ms. Virta appointed full-time director, discussion focused on staffing for the remainder of the year, including aims to fill supervisor roles, vacancies, part-time and seasonal employees. Also discussed briefly were current salary structure with the minimum wage increases and effects that that will have. With regard to technology, with new staffing in the IT department, recreation is hoping to have department systems analyzed for improvements, specifically with hardware. The system at the Minnieville Center was also discussed about updating the system to better utilize the capture point system. With regard to sports programs, currently, everything is running well and expected participation levels. The council members gained clarity to the township's rules in facilitating the leagues, along with the use of Board of Education properties. Aftercare program, currently, there's slightly over 800 children registered, with more expected at the tail end of the summer. There is still, this is still below pre-COVID levels, but an increase compared to the past two years. After this year, an analysis can be performed to see how much of an impact full-day kindergarten plays in a role in the enrollment. Early indications from the current waitlist, though, is that there will be a correlation if increased participation due to full-day kindergarten implementation. Recreation Center, the new center next to the Edison Jets Field was briefly discussed. Ms. Virta said she wanted to make sure that storage was accounted for with the different sports teams that will be figuring to utilize a facility to allow for quick transitions and setup of equipment. And finally, upcoming events, discussed upcoming township events, including Township's First Juneteenth Celebration, looking to have better coordination with outside organizations also putting on the township-wide events. And that is the end of my report. Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Brecher?
Yes.
You're recognized, you have the floor, Sarah.
Thank you. The municipal broadband, we hired a company. I was supposed to get a report of the different townships that they did work in in the past and what they found. This was requested of the administration quite some time ago. I haven't gotten it. They haven't contacted the committee yet. They're doing a survey out there, and in reading the survey, I think the survey's lacking. I don't think the questions were formulated properly, is just my opinion. But then again, you know, if you don't get us the information, you don't give us a contact, I'm not sure really what we're doing here with that, except that everybody should sign up for T-Mobile if you can get it, because they do broadband, and it's cheaper than Optimum. So do you know when I might be able to get that information?
I'll look into that tomorrow when I get in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Brecher. Council Vice President Joyce Ship Freeman, you're recognized, you have the floor.
Well, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting, and we discussed, we discussed things and plans for future meetings in September and October. We discussed also the behavior and the importance of the police officers at the meetings and in which direction that they were, they're going in and everything. So we actually met with each level, each level has a union person, so we discussed that. Then we went on, I went on to the master plan meeting. Now, our master plan meeting is gathering up all types of information. If you send it in about different parks, different zoning areas, and different things that you would like, you know, because whatever neighborhood here, some neighborhood likes volleyball more. Some neighborhood likes, what is it, pickleball. Some neighborhoods like tennis more. So, you know, it's good to have input from each and every person, you know, that, because that's totally different and there's stuff that you want to be involved in. And I just think that the master plan was long overdue. I think we're moving right now in the right direction. And at the same time, I'm learning, because I've noticed that people make comments about zoning, and they made comments about planning, but after speaking to some of the people that are actually on there, you get a better understanding, because I didn't know that planning had this book from the state that's considered the Bible. So therefore, sometimes, when you think you can sue something, or you think you can do something more than you can, you'll wind up costing the township hundreds and thousands of dollars. Because if it's written that way already, don't spend time and energy doing that. A lot of times, we need to go to the state, we need to go to the state to have different things changed, that's all. But with that information, moving right along, and I'm still saying that email us, email me, and let me know what are some of the things that desire for your community, what you would like put into the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Joyce Ship Freeman. Moving right along. Did I miss any council members for committee reports? Hearing none, I'll move forward to the points of light. Any council members have any points to discuss?
Council President?
Yes.
Just a brief announcement that currently, the Edison Art Society is featuring the art of Fernando Silva, which you can find on the second and third floors. And that will be going on from, it was June 8th to July 29th. Fernando Silva is an artist who has done some of the sculptures at Papiani Park. So I urge you to go and take a look at some of his works, most of it is for sale. In addition, the piano painting, the piano painting project is reaching its conclusion, and so they should be unveiled. Do you know, Council President, when the pianos are going to be unveiled on Ambuy?
I have the date, I'll announce it.
Okay, yeah. So to keep, to be aware of that coming up. And those are my remarks, thank you.
Council President? Yes, you're recognized, Council Vice President Ship.
The Juneteenth Celebration will be from 4 o'clock to 10 p.m. And they will have vendors, music, and entertainment for children. And I think it will be a great event for you to attend, I mean, for you to attend, because knowledge is power, and I think you'll learn some things from going to the Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday, the 18th, from 4 o'clock to 10 p.m. And the next day is Father's Day, so if I don't get to say it to all the great fathers, I would like to wish everyone a happy Father's Day and hope you have a beautiful day next Sunday.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other points of light from council members? Hearing none, I'm just going to read the, we had the law enforcement torch run on June 10th that was well-recognized. I want to thank the township, the mayor, and the council for continued support. That, of course, the police department, all for the Special Olympics. I want to thank Captain Gerba for organizing, Deputy Chief Dudash and Chief Bryan. I think it was such a wonderful event that took place, and I couldn't run the six miles they ran. But I was supposed to get in shape for that, but somehow it didn't happen. But yes, maybe next year. And also, I want to thank the DeFaro Foundation and the Tierney family for being there that day as well, in their support, both financially and there themselves. We have June 14th is Flag Day, and June 19th, of course, is Father's Day, that was already recognized. Also, just want to mention, we had Music Fest over the weekend on Ambuy Avenue. It was the first-ever music fest held by the Township Edison and sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. I think it was a wonderful, organized event, and also want to thank the township for their support and this council for doing this with the mayor, and well-organized. Sadly, we didn't have the audience, the attendance we expected. There were multiple events going on throughout the day, but it was a great performance. Thank you, everyone. Listen, Miss, and then also to speak on the pianos. First, I think we were picking two dates at the end of June. I apologize, we don't have that date to unveil the pianos. Goliath, Dittman, and I will have that by tomorrow. But I just want to recognize the locations of the pianos. They're also sponsored by Rob Karabenchek and the Edison Art Society. There's one at Ferraris 1061, there's one at Salon 1012, there's one at the Coffee House, and there's one at 926 Ambuy Ave at the corner and front on the sidewalk. There's one at the Big Tent. I think I have this, the five locations, so I could be missing one. But beautifully done through the Edison Art Society, and also one was done by a member of the society through the J.P. Stevens High School, and they did a terrific job, a really terrific job. So, and I just want to mention, I'm around the points of light with the, that's all I had.
Council President?
Yes.
One other thing you did not mention was the Joy of Others Walk and Run by the BAPS Organization Charity for donating money to Susan Coleman for cancer research, for breast cancer. It was on June 5th at Edison Park.
And I thank you, Council Vice President. I did miss my report as council, as council president for the committees that I serve. Councilman John Poyner did mention some things for DPW, I know he am, but I also just want to clarify with everyone some comments I may have made today. Again, it's all just for the decorum of this meeting and just trying to conduct a civil discussion to all of us here for the residents of Edison. I hope this will continue in the spirit of conducting business in the town. And for those who are listening, to just have a meeting that is productive, and we do appreciate all of you for that. I also want to just correct that this letter for the zoning board was written by Councilmember Harris. I made a mistake there, and thank you for putting that together. I had nothing, what's that? I have nothing further, I'm just going to move through the agenda. Any other questions for council committees or points of light reports? Hearing none, I'm going to go to the Business Administration, A and B. Any questions or comments from council members?
Council President?
Yes, you're recognized, Councilman Brecher, you have the floor.
A, the bond ordinance, is this a new bond? Or is this part of the 15 million, and you're just allocating the funds differently?
It's part of the General Capital Improvement Fund, and we're just allocating this differently.
Okay. Can I get a list of what you have, like, that was a $15 million bond, and you're taking 7 million of it? So the other half of it, what part are you taking it from?
So the second part will be done in November, because we originally had a bond ordinance that happened early in the year for the Silver Lake property. We can explain exactly what, why we're breaking it up. Do you want to cover that?
Councilman, I'm not sure if this, this is helpful. It's, I think you're talking about the capital program. This is, this is one bond, there wasn't a bond done already. So this is the first part of the capital program that you're doing bonding for, and then the second part you'll do in October, is that correct?
Correct.
So there wasn't a, another bond ordinance for this, it's just a...
Okay, let me ask a question. Last year, I sat here, and I voted on a $15 million bond. In my budget, when I open it up, I see a $15 million bond.
That would be true.
Councilman Brecher, just to interrupt you, you're speaker, you can't, no one can hear you.
Okay, is that the same, is this the same money from that same bond?
No, it's not, and if it was, if we were, let's say we were reprogramming the money from that bond, right? This bond would say it would be an ordinance amending that bond ordinance, but that's not what this is. This is this year's capital program, not last year's capital program.
So what you're saying is we approve $15 million to do paving, community work, right? Police Department, fire engine, that $15 million we did last year, that you're only appropriating, I think, 5% to put down down payments on stuff? And now this is going to be an additional $7 million bond?
Yes. This is different than the bond from last year, correct, Ken?
Yes, that's correct. So every year, we've been doing, the township has been adopting a $15 million capital improvement program. So the one you referenced previously was adopted in 2021. This one, we're doing in two different steps, because we do have to appropriate a 5% cash down payment. Because we, earlier this year, adopted bond ordinance for the acquisition of the Silver Lake property, we didn't have enough money in the capital improvement fund, and we will reappropriate money in September, October, and November to be able to do the second half of the 2022 $15 million program.
Okay, last year, last year, we approved a $15 million bond, correct?
Yes.
And we spent virtually nothing, correct?
So 5% or something?
No, so, so, two different things. The 5% we're talking about is what you appropriate in your budget to pay the down payment. The amount of money, when you spend money out of a bond ordinance, and once again, Ken, I'm just going to pretend I'm playing CFO. When you, when you spend money out of a bond ordinance, it gets charged against the bond ordinance, so it doesn't, you don't see that in your budget, you see it, it's charged against the bond ordinance. So it's appropriate, because you appropriate money in your budget, and this is a capital ordinance, which is also an appropriation. So when you spend money, last year, you had a fire truck, right? It gets charged against the bond ordinance, it doesn't get charged against a budget line item. That's, that's the way it works. So the answer to your original question is, this is $5 million for a community center. That doesn't mean it's instead of the fire truck and the paving from last year, this is in addition to. So I think that that was your initial question.
Right, so my question is, we passed a $15 million bond that we spent virtually nothing on so far. So we still have that sitting there, correct?
We've been working actively on the project. So to your question, you want to know if we're, we've been spending money out of the 2021, and we have?
Out of that bond?
Correct.
Okay, can I get a list of what we spent out of that bond? And then, and then we had the Silver Lake bond also, correct? That's a separate bond?
Right, that was really this year back in February.
Yes, and that has not been spent yet, because it hasn't closed yet.
Okay, but we approved the bond.
Correct, so that appropriation is hanging out there, but it hasn't been spent yet.
Right, so I have a $15 million appropriation, I got the Silver Lake money appropriation sitting out there, and this would be an additional $7 million, correct?
Typically speaking, Edison passes a $50 million infrastructure bond ordinance. So the acquisition is a whole separate item. But what we're explaining here is that, right now, we're doing a $7 million infrastructure bond, and then later in the year, we plan on doing the other half.
Okay, so now, let me ask you a question. We have flooding issues in the town. We have flooding issues in the town, and, and I brought this to your attention, right? We had a resident that brought it to our attention. He brought up one area, my councilman, my council colleague, Mr. Patel, he brought it up, that same area. But we also have an area of flooding that is down where the old mayor lives, down by the mosque by Park Avenue, where they have flooding that's taking, and, and we had those residents come to our meeting. And then we had an area where our old, old mayor lives, down by Clark, by the Clark border, where we had some flooding that was taking place. And then we have flooding on Grove Avenue, which is where I happen to live. And then we have flooding down by Lincoln School. Now, that person, I guess the township spoke to, and, and it, the cost to help that one was too much. But how come we're not allocating any funds to take care of any of this flooding when we're doing this capital bond here, and you're allocating only $200,000 to pay for the engineering?
Part of the resurfacing program is to do the fieldwork, and during the fieldwork, if there are any issues with regard to the underground infrastructure, that would then, those monies would then be reallocated to addressing that infrastructure issue. As far as I know, even during the master plan and revisiting that, that might be part of the conversation is addressing the infrastructure portion of the sewer system and things of that nature, so. But there is, there are conversations, and that is part of the fieldwork that's being done by the engineer.
Well, the engineer, so you're telling me you can give me a report on what the engineers come? The reason why I say this is the past mayor had the engineering firm review this. He came up with pricing to do the engineering work to fix the problem. And now we have a new engineer, and we're wondering, are we gonna fix these sewer problems? I mean, we have a sewer budget, like, I'm almost looking like no one's looking at this, because the engineer should have come up with a design already or come up with the pricing for you. But you switched to a new engineer, are they aware of these problems? Is anybody in the administration aware?
We are aware, and we're addressing them.
Could you give me an update on this?
Sure.
The statuses of all of these?
I'll provide that to the council.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Brusher?
That, that is it, Council President, thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the council, A and B, and the Business Administrator? Hearing none, moving forward to nine from the Department of Finance, A through H, any questions from the council members? Hearing none, moving to the Department of Health, the employment registrar, A, any questions or comments?
Appointment of a registrar? Did we have the name, the resume? We had the resume?
Same person.
Which one is that?
Mary Briggs. She's her reappointment.
She is the registrar.
Any other questions or comments from the Department of Health? Number 10, moving to 11, from the Department of Law, A and B, any questions or comments?
Yes, Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Harris, you're recognized, you have the floor.
Yes, this is the hot topic item, obviously, this evening. And I just wanted to share some thoughts on it. When this was first proposed, my feeling was that it's not so much about the minutes, the amount of minutes, six to four, whatever it is, it's about the way these minutes have been used. And, you know, I, I want to say, first of all, how much I appreciate, I'm grateful for the people who attend these meetings, I'm grateful for the people who stream these meetings or view them at some point later on, that you take an interest in this. And based on the meetings that we had, not just the last time, but the last few meetings, you deserve a lot more than what you, than what you got. And, and so, clearly, we need to button things down here. There's no question that need, that order and decorum needs to be resolved. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking at less about the amount of minutes that people have to speak. And, you know, quite honestly, to that issue of the amount of minutes, most people don't use their full six minutes. You know, in, in my time on council, now we're going on, that's, I guess it's five or six months, most people don't use their entire allotted time. But the issue has been what, you know, what, what this has all looked like. And the chaos that we had at the last meeting and some of the other meetings, the anarchy that was going on, is, is absolutely unacceptable, and frankly, I found it to be a disgrace. And so, my feeling is, four minutes or six minutes, we, we need to be consistent about the way we button this down. We need to be consistent, I, I appreciate, Council President, that you are going to a, your approach is one of recognizing people, I think that's important. And that people on either side of this, of this rostrum, people on either side of this rostrum need to be held to the same standard of being, and not speaking until they are recognized. You know, we, we should hold ourselves over on this side to know, to know less of a standard than what we would be holding you to. So, you know, I, so I'm, I'm hoping, and I, you know, I see the, I see the attempts being made today to try to button this down, and I know everybody's very frustrated. I'm hearing certainly that people are upset about having time cut and having rebuttals cut, cut out. The fact is that we have been very generous with the six minutes of time. A, a lot of, a lot of other townships, I think most of the other townships do not even, they're more like three or four minutes, maybe five, maybe five minutes, but, but not, you know, but not six minutes. And most other comparable townships do not allow for rebuttals. So, I'm less interested in, I'm, I'm less about the minutes than I am about the way these minutes are being used and about the, the whole, the whole, the situation of decorum. We cannot, we cannot have meetings like the last two or three meetings that we have had, and that's what I wanted to say about this. And again, I thank you all for your participation in these meetings and for voicing, you know, for voicing your concerns about it, I hear them. You know, I also want to, you know, I want to make a comment. Bruce Diamond had spoken, he, he had spoken about what Lois Wilkie had said, which was regard to the, putting some limits on council speaking time. And I do remember that one meeting we had that went for five long hours. And, and a lot of that time was, was spent with, with council, with council members who were speaking repeat, and, and being somewhat repetitive. It might have been about the whole cricket issue, I don't remember. But I do think that there's a point to be taken in what Lois Wilkie had said about that as well. So, those are my remarks on this particular ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Council Vice President, Joyce Shippey, you're recognized, you have the floor.
Okay, and addressing that, and addressing the amount of time that's being used, most people, I guess they use between four to five minutes. And I understand what everybody says, that it should go both ways on both sides. And I understand that if you ask this, why ask the same question five times expecting to get a different answer? I, I think that on both sides, like other people say, there should be respect on that side, and it should be respect on this side. I don't call you out of your name, you don't call the other person out of their name. I think that's very, very important, that we show decorum. Even here on our, our council members, I remember, and he remembers me from years ago, what I liked was the person said, "I respectfully disagree with your point." That's how council people are supposed to act with each other. "I respectfully disagree with your point." But that doesn't open up the door to start a whole big bruhaha, you know? I can respectfully disagree, I don't have to go along with your opinion, your opinion. But I just think that if we learn to do that and speak in that manner, the audience, and especially the children at home that are studying history and civics, very important subjects, they will get a better understanding of how council meetings are really supposed to get run. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President?
Yes, sir. You're recognized, Councilman Patel, you have the floor.
I just want to say regarding to this, as Bruce Diamond said, it is a shame that we all have to suffer due to the action of one person. And I'm not gonna name names, because that's exactly what we are discussing here, that we should all be respectful. And one thing being respectful is that we have to be respectful of each other's time. And I believe, yes, you can talk for six minutes, and you can talk for two minutes and say the same thing in brevity, in respecting each other's time, and I think that's important. And I think this change is gonna be hard, and no one wants to be limited as to what they can say. Everyone wants to say what they need to say, and I agree, there are gonna be some hiccups, including like the rebuttal aspect of it. There might be some issues with this, but I think we should carry this on to see how these changes are being impacted in our decorum of those meetings and how effective they are. And I think we all up here, we just want a better run meetings, we want to hear better from you guys, we want to interact better with you guys. And I believe this process is the beginning of that, and I will allow the people that doesn't, don't have self-awareness, hopefully, they do get some self-awareness to realize who we are speaking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. You're not recognized, and I'm gonna ask you once, please, I'm gonna ask you once, please, please. I'm gonna ask you to be removed. You're talking out of order, you know you are, Cristo, stop. It's your warning, only one warning. Continue through the agenda?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Brusher, you're recognized, you have the floor. Sorry, Councilman Porter. You're, you're gonna, you're recognized, have the floor, he's yielding to you. Do you want to thank him?
Thank you. About the A, the ordinance, I do believe that this limits the public. I don't think there should be a limit. I, I disagree with whoever from the public said the council speaks too much. I believe we have a right to speak, just as everybody in the, in the audience has a right to speak. And everybody at home has a right to listen or to turn it off, right? Just like Facebook, you can scroll through. I will tell you that I do believe a lot of our problems that we have today do stem from how we use words, okay? And, and this goes back to when people talked about the, the horrific shootings that we've had over and over that, that have happened. And it's because our society, and in general, has just lacked decorum. So, people fought for these rights for us to speak, and I recognize that they have every right to speak and say these words. Lenny Bruce and George Carlin, actually, fought many years ago in the early 70s for the right to say whatever they wanted to say, and they went to court and they won. So, while my grandmother is offended, and while my mother and father are offended, my father that served recognizes that people do have those rights. So, as you have the same right to say that you're offended by what someone said, you, you have that right. That's a, that's a given right in this country, and we deserve to all have that. And the whole making it from four to six minutes just seems silly to me, in my personal opinion, because I believe that George Carlin could say anything in four minutes that any of us can say in six minutes, so therefore, we're not gonna stop that situation. I do think maybe the council, instead of doing this, should have a discussion as to what type of decorum, what type of level of, of verbiage maybe is used. And I'm not about seeing a resident say something just to sue us, right? So, we pay, I'm, I'm against that. But I do believe that there has to be something, you can't have yelling and screaming going on. You know, there does have to be some decorum. So, I, I think this here is, is totally wrong and misses the mark, but I, I give you credit for trying to do something. And then my next one was...
Did you just compliment me?
What's that?
Oh, it was me.
That was short, that was just a little. Then my next question was B, I couldn't open that up, what is, what is that, that about?
So, that is a, we're referring to it as a direct hire agreement. From time to time, the township needs temporary labor. So, there are skilled labors represented by the middlesex building trades, carpenters, in this, this case, laborers, plumbers, electricians, that are out there. And a number of towns, Woodbridge does it, Long Branch has done it, a number of other towns, enter into direct agreements with those unions. So, for instance, we're gonna move into the new offices for Water and Sewer at 54 Ethel. And instead of doing it with our own personnel, who we have to pull off the street, we'll now hire on a temporary basis laborers to come in and help us do that move. And, and hopefully, next meeting, we'll also have one on for carpenters, if there's some carpentry work that needs to get done. And we hire them under their, their union contract, so we don't have to benefit issues or anything like that. And they, they are essentially temporary employees. But it's, think of it as a, like using Kelly temps, except we're going to skilled labor unions to get, to get people to come in and, and help us out where we need labor shortage. A lot of the short towns do it, and I think Woodbridge does it too. If you have a, you know, hurricane sandy situation where you need people to come in and, and work to remove trees and do all those things, and everybody's tied up, you can quickly hire out of union halls employees to work for you for a week or two weeks to help you through, through some kind of emergency. So, I think that that's, you know, in days of difficulties in hiring people, it's just some, it's just a, something else that you can use or not use, of course, within your budget, gives the township some ability to, to move quickly to get projects done.
And which one is Local 77, that's a labor?
The Local 77 are the, are the laborers.
Okay.
And, and you're gonna see, once again, a series of these. I had hoped to get the carpenters on too, but you'll see the carpenters, but you're gonna see bricklayers and plumbers and electricians and all of the, the various building trades.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Brusher. Moving forward to...
Council President?
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Porter, you're recognized, you have the floor.
Thank you. In regards to A, and I will respectfully disagree with my council colleague's mention about potential, like, a language list. I'm very familiar with George, George Carlin's Seven Words You Can't Say on Television, which was further expanded on. However, and I may be getting the case wrong, but I believe Cohen v. California stated that one man's insult is another man's lyric. So, it can be, I tried to do my due diligence. A couple of questions to the attorney, if I may. Does the council, if it's brought down to the four minutes, does the council have the ability to extend the time if it deems warranted, understanding that if it's applied to one, it is applied to all?
It would, if it's applied to one, it's applied to all. I mean, generally, in these kind of restrictions, that's how they should be done, because otherwise, it would give a discretion that would be inappropriately challenged for, as you know, if you read Cohen versus California, and the other cases that came out of that is censoring people based upon whether or not you like or don't like what they say. So, hard and fast rules, applied objectively, are what's defensible.
Yeah, I ask that because I believe it is either Plainfield or South Plainfield that specifically has in their guidelines, unless extended by council, giving us the ability to extend the time. I would personally like to see that language added, I understand that may not be advised. There was one other question that I have from the legal aspect. I apologize, it's escaping me right now.
We can come back to you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving, and council members from the Department of Law. Moving, hearing none, moving to Department of Planning Engineering, number 12, A through I. Any questions from the council members, A through I? Hearing none, moving to Department of Public Works, A through E. Any question or comments from council members?
Council President?
Yes.
In regards to item E, I just wanted to make the public aware that this is actually striping for all school locations. I know it's not every single school, but it is a majority of the schools within the township. Just thought people would like to know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And the questions for 13? Yes, you're recognized, Councilman Brusher, you have the floor.
Yes, C, I see we have electrical services not to exceed $175,000, what's that for exactly?
Those are for general electrical services that we do throughout the town. We do have to go out to bid, because it does exceed the threshold.
Well, if, if I went back to, to my last question, why wouldn't we just... Well, if I went back to my last question, why wouldn't we just hire someone from the electrical union to, to do this work? And then, you know, as like our employee?
We could, we, it gives us several options, I would say, having this and then having the direct hire. Doesn't necessarily mean that we'll spend all of this, but generally speaking, if there's a major project or something happens and we exceed the threshold, you're better safe than sorry in this situation.
Okay, I guess, you know, it is like, I, I see going one way makes sense, then it wouldn't make sense to go in this direction for, for this one. If the other one was the best way to go, you know, then it would be better to hire a company that would just do moving, like we were just talking. I personally believe that going out and hiring the union directly is more cost-effective. But here, we're doing things like different ways.
I think the direct hire is kind of a new concept. So, I think what you're gonna see, my guess would be, is this is a not to exceed number. Next year, you won't see that number, right? Because if you need to get an outlet moved, it's, or you have four or five outlets that move, it's easier to hire an electrician out of the union hall and have him do that for the day. But there may be, you know, if you need, if there's, if there's a bigger job, if you're the contractor, I'm not, if a panel goes and you need to get somebody in and to do it in an emergency situation, you may need to go this way. So, you may need to have both, but I think, I think you're right, though. I think ultimately, you'll see this number will come down, because the odds and ends kind of jobs will now be able to get done by using the temp laborers, and it makes more sense.
All right. Next question, E. I heard that we were doing striping. Now, I know that we have a road department, right? And when I got on the council, I was actually alarmed, because I found out that the road department didn't do any road paving, which is what I thought they would do. And what I was told was that the road department does potholes and line striping. But now, we're hiring an outside company to do the line striping?
What's your, I'm sorry, what is your question?
Well, what, if, if we have employees that do line striping, why are we hiring an outside company and paying them $17,000 to paint stripes when our employees do it?
From my understanding, this might be a quicker way to get done most of these school intersections. Our machine, from time to time, has been inoperative, so this was a quicker method to get most of the intersections done for the schools.
Yeah, but for the schools, the schools are gonna be closed for the next couple months. There is a way for them to, they could stripe it, our people. I'm, I'm like looking at the direction that, that this administration's heading, you know, and it, it looks like we're gonna outsource as opposed to hire people to, so that we could do the jobs we should be doing. And, and then in another aspect, we're hiring the union people, so then we can do it. So, I, like, we're all over the place with it. It's, we're not headed, what's the direction of the administration, is it for us to do the work? Or is it for us to subcontract out to subcontractors?
Councilman Brescher, I think it's just a discretion of the opportunity at hand and the timing of what needs to be done and the consequence of getting it done. And there's a few options on the table. I would imagine our first opportunity would be to hire, have our own people do it, but we are limiting our resources and employees to get it done.
Council President?
So, you're, you're recognized, Councilwoman. Councilship, you have the floor.
The regular session of school is over come Friday, but being on the school committee, the summer school starts immediately the next week, within days. The summer school, the summer camps and everything is a whole location of it. They have a whole file with the recreation department, and they also have a whole file with the other stuff going on. So, therefore, it is very important to take care of the places in front of the school, because there will be kids crossing there, and there will be parents coming there, because parents drive their kids everywhere nowadays. So, I just wanted to let you know that school is officially closed on Friday, but we have a whole bunch of programs that our students will be going to, and their parents will bring, go, go back and forth too. You can check with our recreation department, and you can check with the educational department and see all the things that's going on right after the school lets out.
Thank you, Councilman Brescher. And one thing I just wanna add to you as well, whether we, and again, this is like a spearheaded subject that's going in three directions, because we just did the electrical contract, we did the direct hire contract, and then you see this striping contract. But it's fair that all of them have fair labor practice in mind to hire people at a fair wage. So, whether we do the direct hire or in-house, I mean, we're not doing anything below the standards of pay.
No, no, direct hire I like, and I like doing it in-house.
And we discussed direct hire nine months ago, you and I.
Right.
And we discussed another ordinance, which probably will come at a later date. I'm sure the mayor will consider that as well, but, because I know we looked at it last year with Mr. Lanky. So, I mean, I think we're just off to explore how these options come together. But you, you do raise a good question.
Yeah, Council President, I like those. My, my question here is this $17,000 for the striping, because we do that in-house, and we do it over town. I've watched the guys do it. So, when do they anticipate having all these stripes done, then? I mean, if, if we're getting a company here, right, you have to have them locked into a date for them to be complete. What is their timeframe for them to get it complete?
I'll get back to you on the contract once that's finalized.
Before our meeting, though, right? Like, before we vote on it?
Yes, we'll get you an answer before Wednesday.
Thank you. That's it, Council President.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Brescher. Moving forward, any other questions or comments?
Council President?
Yes.
Just in regards to that same item, because on the bid spec, it specifies thermoplastic paint, which I'm not knowledgeable in the different types of striping, but that may address Councilman Brescher's question about why it's being outsourced. So, maybe if we can get the DPW director just to explain why.
I don't think we have a thermoplastic machine.
I don't know, so... Those are good questions. We'll get you them before, before Wednesday.
Thank you, Council President.
Good enough. Great. Moving forward, from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Recreation, A, any questions on A?
Council President?
Yes.
This was for a rental fee, because the principal's retiring at Ben Franklin, right?
Yes.
I'd like to say that, you know, he was one of my favorite principals that we did have here in Edison, so I just wanted to acknowledge Steve, you know, and thank him for putting his time in here in Edison. That was all, Council President.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from 14, Department of Recreation? Hearing none, the Department of Order and Sewer, A. Any questions or comments of letter A? Hearing none from the Chief of Fire, 16, A through D. Any questions or comments from the Chief of Fire?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Brescher, you're recognized.
Yes, I can't ask the Chief of Fire, I don't see him.
Do you have a question that you want answered later by the administration? Yes, of course.
Okay. No, you just said to ask, for me to ask the Chief of Fire, and I just didn't see him here, that's all.
Okay.
Question C. This is for a house that was taken down on Steevenville, that, and in the agenda, it said that it's for the work that was done, but I couldn't open up, like, the contract. What was the scope of work for that contractor?
Want to put that question on hold, Mr. Brescher? We'll move to something else?
Yes, that's the...
I mean, I'll, I'll go back to it.
I have that here.
Yeah, okay.
The scope of the work obviously was caused, fire caused extensive damage, deemed the house structure unsafe, so that was the scope of the work. And that was called out by the code enforcement at that time.
And they, and they were to, to do what? To take the home down or remove it?
Yes.
Take it down and remove it, yes.
Okay, it's, because it said the work was done on the agenda, I think.
Correct.
Correct, on the 21st of May.
So, the way emergency contracts work is that it's done, and then it, then it gets brought to, I guess, obviously, there was an imminent hazard there, so they had to get it down before they could go for a contract. So, on the emergency contracting, they do it first and then come back to council at the next available meeting.
Okay, then, on Steevenville, somewhere between Warwick and Plainfield Road, if we could have somebody go out there and take a look on the north side, it looks like, it looks like there's a house that, that blew up. There's a big pile of debris, it's probably about 15 feet high and about the size of a house.
I think that's been cleared. Is that this house? No, it's not.
Councilman Brescher, that was cleared, because I take that road almost every day 10 times.
Did you?
Yes.
When was it clear?
On the Steevenville Parkway, the house that was burned down, that was taken down.
Okay.
And it was cleared.
Maybe somebody else took a house down.
Possibly.
That, that's what I, I drove by and I seen this big pile, I didn't know what it was, and then I noticed this, so I thought it might be the same one.
Might, might be.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Councilman Brescher, any other questions or comments from the Chief of Fire, A through D? Hearing none, moving to the Chief of Police, A through H. Any questions or comments from council members? Hearing none, moving to the, to the Township Clerk, A, B, and C. Any questions or comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Brescher.
You know, I wasn't happy about the people that we appointed to the zoning board in the past, but this person here, I do feel, is very knowledgeable, and I think this was a good pick. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brescher. Okay, moving forward, any questions or comments from Township Clerk? Hearing none, moving to the, the member of the planning board, Councilmember Pointer. Any discussions?
Thank you, Council President. The next planning board meeting is next Monday, June 20th, 7 o'clock here at Council Chambers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Pointer. Unfinished business, moving to number 20 ordinance of further consideration, public hearing and final adoption. Any questions or comments on 021462022? Any council members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, moving forward to discussion items. Myself, from my left, Councilman John Pointer.
Thank you, Council President. First item I wanted to mention, last night, I got an email, and many of us may have been CC'd from a resident who was a little displeased about the conditions on Whitman Avenue. So, I went out there this morning to take a look, to take photos, just to pass information along to the administration. Councilmember Brescher can even attest that I was heading out there, because I called him this morning during so. When I got there, though, two members of DPW were already out there, and the area was already cleared. We had gotten the email at 7 o'clock last night, and by 8:15 this morning, the DPW crew was out there this morning and had cleared the area. So, I went to look around and make sure that everything was, you know, just make sure of the conditions. And as I was going through, the gentleman who actually wrote the email was taking his morning walk. Came up, discussed, and was extremely pleased with the work that DPW had done. Hopefully, that this is continued, continued maintenance, but I just wanted to bring attention to the phenomenal turnaround that DPW had performed this morning. In general, last week, we had the primary election, so I just wanted to say thank you to all the poll workers that put in countless hours in making sure that our elections are run properly, safely, and efficiently. And lastly, obviously, it has been mentioned about decorum here at Council Chambers, irregardless of, if that's a word, Councilmember Harris.
It isn't.
Irregardless if we like, dislike, approve, disapprove of speech that is utilized, if we feel that something is wrong, we here on the dais should at least make mention. At the last meeting, I did not make mention on language and verbiage that I disagreed with. So, I said this in private, but I'm gonna say publicly to Council Vice President Ship Freeman and to Sonia, our business administrator, I apologize for at least not voicing my opposition to the decorum at last meeting. In regards, now I think about what the items I was meaning to say before, I've tried to research what other townships have done in regards to their public comments. Quite honestly, Edison is very generous in what it does. We offer the longest speaking time, we've offered rebuttals, no other townships offer rebuttals. However, just as a general note, some do allow residents to come back up to speak if they have not finished their time. So, that was actually going to be my second question. If a resident does not use all of their time allotment, even if there is no rebuttal, Council President to the attorney, if I may?
Yes.
Is the resident allowed to be reintroduced back up to speak?
Well, so, as a practical matter, thank, thank you for having done some of that research. So, my kind of anecdotal research is, I sit in council meetings for five different municipalities every month, and I probably have sat in council meetings for half a dozen municipalities on top of that. None of them allow people to come up more than once. It is, the meetings become, tend to become a free-for-all. You're now gonna have, you're gonna have to tell Marlene that she is going to have to keep track of everybody's time and figure out. So, somebody speaks for three and a half minutes, and she's gonna have to keep 33 seconds somewhere on a pad, so that when that person comes up, they should be... As a practical matter, the purpose of doing it this way, and that I've just noticed once again from the council meetings that I go to, is that it just runs more orderly. And then, this is kind of out, out of no disrespect to the public, but most people who speak publicly, and, and you see it here, here at the meetings, have something to say. If you give them four minutes, they will get it out, and they will say it. If you give them 10 minutes, they will say it four times. And it's a matter of getting everybody, and by the way, this is out of respect to the other people who want, who, who want to speak. The thing I agree with Councilman Brescher about, and I don't agree with the members of the public who said this tonight, is you were all elected here to debate these issues? This is a council meeting, right? This is, while, while there is a public portion of it, it's just a portion of it, the rest of it is the council meeting. You know, I always note parenthetically for the two partners that I had were in the legislature that they passed these laws requiring public portions at council meetings, but they don't do it at legislative sessions, right? You don't get, they don't have a public portion when the General Assembly meets. This is a unique opportunity for people to speak, and I think it's good that they get to speak, but the business of the council is the business of the council, and whatever time the council takes respectfully to do that, they should, they should do that. But in my experience, in, in going to thousands of council meetings, literally in the last 40 years, I guess, including maybe a thousand of them in this council chambers, some of which, and Cheryl knows this, and Joyce knows this, because she used to be here, four-hour council meetings were a walk in the park. Seven-hour, I walked out of this building at a quarter or four in the morning from a meeting that started at 6 o'clock, and, and so, the, the answer is, I think that it gives an order to the meetings, it would not, there's no practical way we could do that, allow people. And by the way, the same thing with ceding time to other people and stuff, you just can't, you can't do it. Thank you for the clarification. You're welcome. That's it, Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pointer. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, attorney, for stepping in and clarifying.
You're recognized, you have the floor.
You're welcome. Most of our problems are due to the combined meeting, honestly. Let's not try to solve the problem, which probably we could avoid, possibly. And that's where I'm all open for any of the suggestions in terms of keeping the, the decorum of this council meeting, and everybody should be respected, public as well as these council members. However, this council, this work session meeting is supposed to be the council meeting, and we should have an ability to debate the issue unless and until every single member on this council is satisfied. We cannot say that the council member is talking too long, it is four-hour meeting, five-hour meeting, that's the reason we are meeting here, that's exactly the reason we are meeting here, right? So, I want to make it very clear that don't anticipate or don't expect that the next council meeting, the council member is going to talk probably two minutes or three minutes and move on. That's not gonna happen. So, just want to make it clear. And in terms of the other items, I, again, I fully on board, and this is not the first time I'm voicing my opinion, this is going on for a long, long time. We should have put the control right at the point in time, but hey, you know, better We should have put the control right at the point in time, but hey, you know, better to be late than never. I believe in that philosophy. And we have an opportunity to, you know, probably be creative if we see more people in the audience and to respect their time, the way you did, if we can move the public portion ahead of our time. And again, thank you for that. Only the caveat is as soon as the speaker is done, if BA or Council President, you or Attorney can respond to their question right at that time, rather than accumulating everything and getting lost. That's not fair to the residents as well, right? The whole idea is to respect the people because they are here, they are voicing their opinion. Let's give them that respect. Let's address their concern. And if you don't have answer, yes, say that. We'll get back to you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Patel. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Council President. I do.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I do agree with what Councilman Patel said, that we should answer the questions right after. I think that will essentially be a better dialogue with the residents. And, but I respectfully disagree with what he said regarding to the council should have the ability to speak endlessly on a topic. Yes, I do agree that they have and they should utilize to voice their opinion and discuss any item, but they should be respectful of everyone's time, including the residents, and be, have brevity in order to say the same things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Patel. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, you have the floor. You're recognized.
Councilman Patel, I just want to address you. I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we put a time limit on council member, the amount of time that council members speak. You know, I think I'm still going back to that five-hour meeting where it was not so much debate between us as it was. There was this ping-pong match that was going on between us and the public. And, you know, I think there was a lot of repetition that was going on with that. And so I'm not looking for time limits on, on how long council speaks. I'm looking for just being mindful of other people's time. And if a point has been made, the point has been made and not to, you know, not to be going over and over and over it. That's, that's all I meant with that. I want to thank Council President for making some of these reforms at tonight's meeting. We have a lot of kinks that we have to still iron out clearly. You know, this is, this is a situation where Rome wasn't built in a day. And so, and I do agree that people in the, when, when public is asking questions, that they deserve an answer right, right then and there. And, and because otherwise clearly things get lost in translation. And so I'm hoping that we can tighten that up as well. But I appreciate Council President's tightening up of this particular meeting. And I appreciate, again, the public being, the public collaborating with us on that. So those, those are my remarks on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Brescher?
Yes. First off.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you. I, I, first off, I, I think a lot of this, where the public gets upset with how much time we speak, comes from the fact that we do combined meetings and we make the public sit here for five hours for them to then say their part. Whereas if we did it like we're doing today, they, they get to come up here at the beginning. And if they don't want to sit here and listen to us, they can go home and watch us on live as they're making dinner or doing whatever else they're doing. So I'd like to see if we can try and not do these combined meetings, if there's any way possible. Well, I know it's possible. It just takes a council that's willing to do two meetings. But I, I think that would help. I'd like to say I'm not really happy. I have a feeling that the way the administration's going with us outsourcing striping and not fixing our sewers, maybe to allow them to fall into disrepair. And then I heard that we were going to outsource the crossing guards. It just, I, I just think we're going down the wrong road of outsourcing what municipalities should be doing. And if I could get an update from our legal counsel on the, and, and I, you're probably unaware of this, but if you can get back to me on it, there was a gate on Silver Lake where there was a gentleman that put a gate up and he says he owns our street.
I, I'm actually, I'm actually pretty familiar with it, so.
Oh, okay.
The answer is that, that litigation is pending. As you know, the property on the other side is the Silver Lake property that we're purchasing.
Yes.
Okay. So there, there is a lawsuit pending actually between that same gentleman and the owners of the Glendale property, 41 Glendale Avenue property. So there's, there's actually two lawsuits now. So we are, we're in conversations with both property owners in an effort to try to work out some kind of accommodation that will, that will resolve it all. But yes, I'm very familiar with it. There's been no court dates on it, so there's not actually anything that's happened with regards to the litigation. But as I said, there are two lawsuits and we're talking to all of the parties in an effort to try to resolve them all.
So right now it's more of a negotiation to try and work something out amicably?
At this point in time, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's it, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Brescher. Council Vice President Joyce Ship Freeman?
Okay.
Recognize you have the floor.
Thank you. In reference to outsourcing people, as people probably in the audience know, I'm a union girl, still am a union girl. And I know for a fact about our crossing guards. We've had like super problems over the last 10 years. And the amount of money that would come out of our pockets to play police officers to stand in those spots each day. And you know, if somebody down the street is robbing the store, he can't leave that spot. You know, so then that brings in some other people, that brings in some other overtime. So when you think about total issues, you got to think about them as far as the taxpayer goes. And I still think that crossing guard, we had the right amount that we were supposed to have, that we haven't had in years. We wouldn't be paying that exorbitant, that high amount of money just to have a, a police officer standing there. Now, I, I attended a program of United Way of Central Jersey for United Women. And they were speaking on financial opportunity centers. And I think, and I, I asked them about, and in a affluent town, can we have some financial opportunity centers? Because I think it's good and I think that a lot of times, even kids go away to college and they really don't understand finance. They don't understand. It might take a little short course in school, but they don't really understand finance completely on what the steps, and then they find themselves so deep in debt because I know from being a college student, everybody wants to give you a charge card. Everybody wants to give you a whole, you don't have any money, you don't have a job. But everybody's knocking at your door because you're like fresh meat. They, this is the people that I want to get. So I am trying to get a, the mobile unit. If we can get a mobile unit or we can have some, you know, bi-monthly meetings to take care of our youth before they go out, you know, into the big world out here. You know, because I often remember, I remember even when my child was in school, when the cards first, the debit cards first came out. Well, the teacher called us all in and she said, could you please start giving your kids some money, some actual money? So they can know what it costs back and forth. So, you know, that was a while ago. So I'm just speaking on behalf of the Financial Opportunity Center. Most of your children and most of your people now, who have grown up now, most of them only see a card. They don't see money that often, back and forth unless you, you know, you really don't have much. Now, as far as some complaints were from Jefferson. Jefferson, they were complaining and screaming about, I guess during the time before the, the lead up to the Memorial Day Parade, they felt like they were being harassed, that they were like putting up, they put all these signs on them back and forth for them that make sure their grass was cut at a certain level. And they said they rode around town, and this is on Jefferson Boulevard. They said they rode around town and they seen a whole bunch of other people's grass like really high. So I had to explain to them, you know, I guess that route, that's why the people were doing that. And they asked me who was Mr. Ayat. Sonia, they asked who was Mr. Ayat about them because this is a church group. There's more so complaining because they said within the church group, sometime they're not there like every day during the week. So they missed those signs, so they kind of nervous about getting those signs put there against them. And let's see what else I have here. Oh, we already did that one. Okay, we also have, I'd like to mention Carl Zimmerman, who gave a substantial amount to the torch run for the Special Olympics. Because some people don't know, such different diseases and different things, sometime they come knock on your door. And you knock on your door, it makes you more empathetic and you start realizing that maybe I'm not immortal. So I wanted to make sure that was known. But I wanted to make sure that, two, that we get more zoning people. Because I don't think we have enough because I have to call most of the time when there are zoning issues, which means that I don't care that y'all hire more people because it's better for me because those different grass and stuff that go too high, little, little annoyances daily, you know. To me, I think it would sit down there to get a, a couple of part-timers. To get the zoning stuff, take, you know, the zoning stuff taken care because I see, you know, that the apartment doesn't have that many people in it, so I know that there's a whole lot of work to do because this is a huge town. So I'm just suggesting, that's just me, suggesting that maybe we get some part-time workers, do some zoning to look into the different places that the grass is overgrown. And some people are like, they just set out furniture and they just set out stuff. They're so used to this great DPW department that people just wake up in the morning and throw stuff outside. Like they can just jump and run around like they don't have other stuff to do. So I, we need to get a hold on to that, with that at all. You know, I like to thank the DPW because they're there most of the time when you get them. But it should be their job to run around and see where the places are, you know. The zoning people should tell them, here, here's the ticket, here's the information that we had from the other place. That's what should be done. Okay, and, oh, one other thing, too. I know you probably say, well, she think we have money or whatever. What we need is a social worker for our seniors, a full-time social worker that we haven't had for years. Because we have some other people calling me up telling me, some of these seniors, that people are not going to their house. They're not being evaluated. Some of these people need meals on wheels and different services that we can provide. But if nobody goes to their house and actual, I'm talking social worker, MSW, I'm talking the real thing, not somebody acting as one, a real one going to their house and actually evaluating the people and coming back with a comprehensive report. Because what we're doing now is we're like working with the county. And the amount of people we have, can we please hire a, a, a MSW for the seniors of Edison, New Jersey? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice President Joyce Ship Freeman. Councilmember Patel, do you want to mention something else?
Yes, so I just wanted to.
You're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to mention briefly that Council Finance Committee has the budget report. It is similar to what the mayor presented to the township, but it's just a rehash of what we at the Finance Committee did and what we're looking to do further down the road. We will discuss more of it on Wednesday. I just passed out the report to the council members. Thank you.
And Council President's discussion items, I just want to make a couple of brief statements. First, I do echo a lot of different sentiments from our councils and members in regards to cutting our daytime here from six minutes to four minutes. I do want to share with you, through the clerk's office, I requested them to do a survey among municipalities throughout the state. And the average was about three minutes. So we do, as you may have heard from other council members, we do give a generous amount of time to speak. And again, we need to work this out. So if you're patient, we certainly will have time to see how we can make corrections in answering these questions. And I, I do agree with some of my council colleagues about that. And I am sorry Mr. Diamond left and he was frustrated. But, you know, these changes that I brought to the attention of the council were through a few processes. And with other members of the public who reached out to me, there were different times I've been out in the public, whether it was at a school or at the mall or at a festival. And residents are tired of the timing of our meetings and how the process of decorum takes place here. And they leave that responsibility to the council president. And while I'm on that note, I want to thank anybody who served as council president, including council members at this day. Who's done it before. It's certainly not an easy job to quarterback what's going on in the audience, which quarterback what happens last minute we're not prepared for. And I also want to apologize to Councilmember Joyce Ship for remarks happening and also to our BA, Sonia. And we are definitely taking a step back on some things that happened and taking a strong step forward. So if you could be patient with us as we try to make this meeting move forward and be productive, we certainly will listen to each one of you. But in no way do I not want you to speak. There's no way do I want anyone removed from this council. You're here to speak and give forth what you need to say for the town and ask questions and that's what you're entitled to. And as far as our members of the council, I mean, it's their ability to, they've been elected to have conversations and ask questions here at the council. I mean, what I try to ask is for courtesy for a member to wrap up and move forward and or just ask, you know, for a question to be answered the next day, just so we can cut that time in half. But it's challenging when we have an elected official here who has the same purpose of each one of us here to cut them because of what they feel they want to speak about at that time for how long. But I do ask each one of you, if I do reach out and ask for a courtesy to wrap up, I'm only asking just so we can save the time for the residents here waiting to speak and for those who are listening right now and expecting to hear a different subject. Council President? I'm, I'm not finished yet, Council Vice President. And the other part is sometimes we just get lose sight, we lose sight in a lot of things happening here at the council. And we sometimes may just forget, you know, in the public or the council, of other things going on in the world. Because it's not just your chance to speak here and voice your opinion. There's a lot of things happening. And we had a chance to have an addiction service little seminar the other day. And I want to thank Councilmember Harris for being involved and bringing her expertise forward for us during this time. But also there was a member who discussed, you know, his son dying from addiction. And these things are happening and we're here arguing about time. We're here arguing about, you know, picking on each other. And the world is suffering and not aware of fentanyl that's out there. And fentanyl is deadly and it is shameful what's happening, you know, back in the day. Whoever did choose to have a party and have some fun at the house with beer and whatever else. Today they're passing pills and these pills have fentanyl in them. It's not cocaine people are getting today. They're getting fentanyl. It's cheaper. It's cheaper than heroin. And a dose of that and it's over. So there's just so much else going on in the world and I just hope that we're just going to get lost in arguing about one thing. Bring other things to our attention that we can correct or make whole in your community because there's more than just your personal time at the council and arguing with us. I also just wanted, you know, for, you know, mental health and suicide, it's a problem out there for veterans and so many people who are depressed during COVID and still have not left their house yet. And I have people who tell me they, their parents just don't want to go out to dinner. And so many things I can go forward on and I just want to just rehash those few things. And, but I do want to add some questions to the BA. And while I'm on addiction services in the budget, could you ask the administration, I'm going to leave an answer today, if we're going to expand our addiction services in any way? I think between last year and this year, we made some great strides and accomplishments. We do have someone full-time in that capacity, but it's, it's important we expand and I'd like to see that happen. I have no further questions. I thank this council for listening and for members of the public listening. I did wrap up in five minutes and 22 seconds. I keep track of everybody's time.
I, I don't think you counted properly because you talked a lot more than the five minutes.
It's right here. Well, I gotta blame, I have to blame the device. Well, but some people feel it's a lot more. It's not. That's why I love to keep track of time. Okay, thank you. Is there any other members of the council have anything else to say? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
For a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.